Good evening, and welcome to our first meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission in the new council chambers located at 5555 Perimeter Drive. We are thrilled to have the opportunity to engage with residents, applicants and staff, and each other in this facility which will serve as Dublin's civic center and a place for Dubliners where Dubliners can gather for many years to come. It certainly is a beautiful building. Tonight, you can access the meeting via the live stream on the city's website. We welcome your comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments, and refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public comment to the greatest extent possible. At this time, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I didn't look around. Do we have? Perfect. Mr. Supalak, would you mind leading us in the pledge? Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Maxwell, welcome this evening. Would you please call roll?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Schneer?
Here.
Ms. Fox is absent this evening. Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Way?
Here.
Mr. Fishman?
Here.
Mr. Supalak?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. And Jane couldn't be with us this evening. She is off on a family vacation that was pre-scheduled, and so we will miss her, but we will certainly convey everything that we discuss here tonight to her to catch her up. Tonight, we have two rounds of minutes for approval. Has the commission had opportunity to review those minutes? At this time, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes and to record the meeting documents into the record.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and plating of property are under consideration. In such cases, city council will receive a recommendation from the commission. In other cases, the council has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these cases must be sworn in. The agenda item is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the meeting moderator. The rules and regulations of the commission state that no new agenda items be introduced after 10:30 PM. Anyone intending to address the commission on any cases this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and answer in the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission? Thank you all. At this time, we have two new cases. I will read case one and case two into the record together. Case one, 3800 West Dublin-Granville Road. Case two, same address, 21-025 PP, 21-026 FP, preliminary plat and final plat. These applications are a request for the re-subdivision of 6.69 acre parcel located within the Dublin city center subdivision into two parcels consisting of the following acreage, 1.58 acres and 5.11 acres. The site is located, the site is zoned Bridge Street District, Sawmill Center neighborhood, and located northeast of the intersection of West Dublin-Granville Road and Dublin Center Drive. And Ms. Martin, thank you for joining with us this evening. I'll turn the time over to you for our case presentation.
Great, thank you. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and a recommendation of approval to city council for a combined preliminary and final plat. The site is located within the Bridge Street district, just north of West Dublin-Granville Road and west of Sawmill Road. Presently, the site is developed with a office building as well as a parking lot. The site has frontage on three public streets, Banker Drive, Dublin Center Drive, and West Dublin-Granville Road, as well as a total of five existing access points. The existing plat has been provided for the commission's consideration this evening. This is a re-subdivision of the Dublin city center plat Reserve A, which is approximately 6.7 acres in size. So the proposed preliminary plat documents the existing conditions, as well as proposes a subdivision of this parcel into two parcels consisting of approximately an acre and a half and just over five acres. This memorializes existing cross-access located forward of the building, as well as staff is recommending a condition of approval to address the existing cross-access necessary for the site to continue to function as exists today. The final plat is the document that will be forwarded to city council along with the preliminary plat, as well as eventually memorialized with the county. This is reduced to the necessary lot lines and essential easements. In review of the criteria listed within the subdivision regulations, staff is recommending approval of both the preliminary and final plat to the planning commission for a recommendation of approval to city council, and each of those is with two conditions. The first being that the applicant work with us to establish a cross-access easement, as well as the second that any minor technical adjustments take place, whether those be numeric or technical notes. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicant team is here as well this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Looking to the commission, are there questions for staff at this point in time? Mr. Supalak.
Just a quick question. The scale of the parcel that's breaking off comparable to other parcels in the area? Yes, okay. And then, can you go back to the plan and help us understand when we're saying a cross- cross-easement? I guess there's, if we, if we break off that parcel and we give it to someone else, but at the same time, we're saying, but this cross-easement we're allotting, that pretty much limits said parcel to, right, to the south side of that parking lot. Can you help us understand how the easement will work, would work in there?
Yeah, so, right, the intent of this plat is to facilitate potential future development. That being said, it's not clear at which point future development may take place, whether that be within six months, a year, or five years. Therefore, the plat is intended to not only establish those lots, but to also address existing conditions and facilitate site circulation as exists today. So staff is requesting that the applicant work with us to provide cross-access so those folks on Lot Two are able to access Dublin Center Drive, and those on Lot One are able to access Banker Drive. The exact location of that cross-access is yet to be determined.
Got it. So we're not, we're not necessarily allotting, it's a general principle that everyone will have access to both streets. It's not that we're keeping the access as it's currently laid out?
Well, prior to going to city council, we will need to delineate a zone, which we'll collaborate with the applicant on. The intent is that in that collaboration, we will provide an opportunity through plat notes associated with that easement to allow for some flexibility in potentially dissolving or relocating cross-access, whether that be the new one that we establish or modifying the one that's being memorialized, because I don't think anyone is able to predict the manner in which future development will lay out.
Yeah, duly noted, and I'm, I guess I'm, I'm struggling with if we, basically, if we commit to this, right, this easement as it's shown, again, Lot One gets really pinched, and suddenly, we've got a lot that may or may not be usable for future development anymore, and short of knowing what that future development is, is all it comes down to. So if there's flexibility built into it, that potentially could sway how it's received. Thank you.
Just one clarification item. So on Lot One, we have existing parking. Does that parking count toward a requirement on Lot Two for the use that Lot Two is currently used?
So at the time that the site was developed, it did count toward a requirement. Based on the existing zoning today, far fewer parking spaces are required, so Lot Two will be able to meet their minimum required parking without Lot One.
Confirm. Thank you. Mr. Grimes.
I would assume that on terms of cross-easement, there's no problems with utilities since there's lots of, on probably numerous sides, but that, that's something that you'd probably also want to make sure that separate lot would have access to the appropriate utilities?
Yes, that has been fully vetted with the engineering division.
Mr. Way.
This may be a premature question, I'm not sure, but I'm going to ask it anyway. But the way that I read this plan, the, there's a retention basin on the smaller lot, and I assume that retention basin services the whole site right now? So that retention would have to then be accommodated on the site with the building? Or site, Lot Two?
Yes.
Is that correct?
So I cannot answer the nuances of the engineering that would go into that. However, I can say that, you know, this site was developed prior to water quality regulations. So, you know, with new development, it would need to address water quantity and quality, and would need to address anything happening on Lot Two. And since open, open water and other sorts of dry basins are not permitted within the Bridge Street district, the likelihood is that that would be underground storage.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Mr. Underhill, welcome back.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and work your new gadgets.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Aaron Underhill, with Underhill &amp; Hodgson, 8000 Walton Parkway, New Albany, Ohio. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Dublin 18 LLC. With me this evening is the sole owner, Mr. Bob Myers, and COO, Dan O'Hara. Just wanted to speak briefly as to the intent behind the subdivision here. This group has been very successful in taking existing properties and really enhancing them, and I think you've probably seen that as you've driven by this site over the last couple of years. They've owned it for about two and a half years, have really enhanced the existing building and the landscaping, and as they've gone to try to take this to the market with sort of the underutilized portions of the site, given the Bridge Street regulations, there's been a little trepidation in the market that there's no lot sitting there today. So we think from a marketing standpoint, this is really going to help out a lot in terms of finding the appropriate use and development for that piece. As far as the cross-access is concerned, we will continue to work with Nikki and the staff, and it'll probably be Thad and I working on some plat notes here, but, you know, we share the same concern that we don't want to box ourselves in with an access easement here that may not be appropriately placed. And we completely anticipate when we come through the development plan process, whatever that may be with whatever project, that that will be part of the conversation. Our goal will be to write a plat note that really would try to be able to circumvent having to replat everything again, which just seems like a waste of time and effort. But hopefully, through that development plan approval process, you will be reviewing the access to and from the site, and we will be able to address it accordingly during that process. So with that being said, be happy to take any of your questions, or the representatives of the business would be as well.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Looking at the commission for questions for the applicant at this time. Mr. Supalak.
Do you, I guess I'm hearing, market, market the parcel. Taking that to mean there is not currently a plan aside from breaking it off?
That's correct. We have had some interest from various users for reasons of confidentiality, can't really speak to that. We have had some initial conversations with staff to see if there'd be a fit, but at the moment, nothing concrete to present or tell you about.
So follow-up question to that. And the property owners, do they have a use in mind? And I'm talking global buckets, this is.
Sure. Would you like to address?
Did you have a particular use in mind? So big buckets like business, or retail, or medical, you know, we're talking large spans. If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Myers, and my address is 136 Stanbury Avenue, Bexley, Ohio. And essentially, I'm the owner of the property in question. And to answer your question, is there an anticipation of use? And the answer is yes, and we've been in direct dialogue, and I believe Nikki is, is aware of our lead prospect and has met and interacted with him, that it would be a professional medical use that is, is under an agreement presently.
Thank you, sir, very much, Mr. Myers. Looking back to the commission, any questions? Okay, I will close the question and answer period and open up for discussion. So commission, looking for discussion, we have two items before us, preliminary and final plat on this item. And Mr. Way, would you mind starting us off this evening with dialogue on recommendation for items one and two? We are asked to make a decision on preliminary and final plat.
Sure, thank you. I support the subdivision, both of them, so I have no other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Grimes?
Looks like a reasonable plan to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Supalak.
I guess I'm, my only concern is, I think the, again, are we hemming somebody in with this agreement or not? Or are we, the easement agreement, or can we write it in a way that allows us flexibility? I think it's the right thing to do to have included as a condition. I just struggle, I just struggle with what it might mean once it's committed to paper, and then, does it sort of restrict the site? And I don't know what the answer is to that.
I'm asking Ms. Martin to display the conditions so that we can see the way that So, Mr. Supalak, I'd like to seek some clarity here. We have a parcel that's surrounded on three sides by public streets. We have current connectivity with existing asphalt and flow that creates circulation and traffic patterns and everything else that would otherwise impact the adjacent streets and the use. So I don't typically invite the applicant back up for a question and answer, but I might break precedent break protocol here. Mr. Underhill, if you're able to speak for the applicant, are you concerned with the way that this is worded for, working with staff to maintain some type of easement for this breaking off of this single parcel?
Thank you for asking. You know, there is a notation in the staff report that kind of, that I guess does speak directly to this issue, and that in combination with this, I think we're okay with it. I don't think anybody, us or the staff, wants to hem us in, so, you know, I'm trying to think, kind of on my feet here, about what that note might say, but, you know, I certainly know that this group will be seeing any sort of future plan for this and would have the ability to sort of acknowledge change in the cross-access later. I guess depending on the circumstances of what would be included in that proposal, we may go to council or we may not. So I don't know if Mr. Boggs and I can think on the top of our head, off the top of our head, whether or not we can delegate the power to the commission during the development plan approval process to modify this. I mean, the note might be written in that way, and we could record something at a later date to reflect their approval, but that's sort of along the lines that I'm thinking, and since we will be back before this board, and we have a clear understanding in the minutes in the staff report, I feel comfortable.
So, Mr. Fox, looking to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Underhill's sentiments that, you know, I think that we'll be able to find a solution that will be both protective of the existing use of the site, as well as accommodating to the way it may develop in the future. I'm reluctant to go off the top of my head this evening, just as Mr. Underhill is, but I think that we can get there. And one item that I would note about the particular posture that this is before you this evening is both of these are recommendations to council who will make the final decision on the plat, and the way that these conditions are drafted is prior to council being presented with its final decision-making point. We either will have come up with a solution or not, and, you know, move forward or not accordingly.
So given those statements, Mr. Supalak, does that mitigate your concern?
Yeah, I mean, it's, have this, it's eyes wide open for all of us, right? Plats are, you know, the nature of them, they do get very specific, and if we get very specific for you here, all of a sudden, that restricts, you know, you're, we're talking marketability on your, on your side, but also on our side. It restricts the site, so maybe it's less usable. And I think there's merit to preserving the flexibility here. As long as we're eyes wide open, we have, we have those moments, we're tuned into the fact that, tuned into the fact of it collectively, I can be comfortable with it, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Mr. Fishman.
I have, I have no problem with it. My only little concern is on the second lot, when it is developed, so often, people come in and want to develop it to its full potential, and, and there's going to be, might be a problem with the cross-easement, or traffic, or whatever. So I think it should go on record that there might be some sacrifices on this second one as far as the amount of development, development and way it's developed because of the way it's situated and how small it is.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Schneer.
Given that this is a recommendation, given that this is part of the process, and that council will be reviewing this, and that we will be reviewing any development, I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Any final comments from the commission? Mr. Supalak.
Forgive me for circling back. The, how do we mitigate, right, there's the concern of this, these, you alluded to the fact that these parcels, this grand parcel is, was developed prior to certain water quality and quantity controls, right? Pending, pending the development of Lot One, we're kind of saying Lot One has to shoulder then bring in, because it's currently the collection spot, we're saying that has to shoulder the burden of bringing the whole site, both parcels up to, up to code at that point on quality and quantity, or no?
So based on my limited experience in engineering, existing development has exemptions. So new development on the parcel will need to comply and potentially offset any existing stormwater functionality that's happening on their parcel. I would be surprised, and maybe Mr. Way can chime in, if there was only one location on this parcel where stormwater was flowing. A lot of these older sites actually pond in the parking lots, which is not something we would do today, but I think there are a variety of directions that water is probably going on this site.
So as we don't have engineering present who could kind of clarify and provide details, but with the understanding that our current belief, again, engineering is here, not here to clarify, but that our current belief is that any water quality and quantity mitigation for a new parcel would only need to meet that new parcel's requirements. Does that answer your question? Understanding where we are in the process, where.
Generally, but I think the concern is the design might have drawn it to this side of the site, which is now, which now means parcel one, like if we're, if they're caught, put it this way, if they sell it, and, oh, by the way, when they sell it, that, yeah, go redevelop it, and all of a sudden, they've got to shoulder both sites to bring, you know, I mean, a certain amount of water, water engineering for both sites? It's a, it's a heavy task, and I don't know if we have to mitigate that in anything we're doing or not.
Understood. The only call-out there would be there is precedent for shared use, whether that's shared parking, shared open space, shared anything between parcels. So again, looking to staff for precedent, again, not putting this applicant, this application will do, we're not saying that, but given the staff that we have present today and our knowledge today, and where we are in the process, that we are submitting to council a recommendation based on the information that we have before us tonight. Looking to staff for clarification.
I mean, my understanding, similar to Nikki, is the new development would have to mitigate whatever stormwater needs they have for their particular parcel. Typically, for existing sites, you're not, as long as you're not making changes to that, you should be, you should be okay with your.
I think the current, the concern, and Mr. Supalak, please clarify if I don't state this properly, is if the current mitigation is we are going to flow water downstream, and downstream means to the second parcel, and so the second parcel has 90% of the mitigation, construction costs, mitigation costs, and therefore, because they're mitigating that 90%, now, any water quality that they weren't previously subject to improvements would be on a greater share than would typically be their share. Mr. Supalak, did I cover?
Yeah, I mean, if the design is, if the design is the way we suspect it could be, and I know you're chomping at the bit, to get in here, by all means, please do, because we need your expertise. If the design is that it's all shedding towards one, when one comes in to redevelop, they still are catching that water, and they still have to, have to do it. So two is not really taking any burden in any of this, and that's, that's going to come to a head, and.
Mr. Way.
I just want to say, one, we don't have any engineering facts right now that we're dealing with, and this goes back to my original question, is that the way I read the plan is that Lot One has the retention for the whole site right now. It would be, and I'll ask this as a question, once Lot One is developed, Lot Two would then be responsible for handling its own water quality. That's a question. And we don't have engineering here to answer that, but I don't think, and I don't think Lot One is big enough to handle both of them. So I think this is a, is an interesting question.
So, Mr. Underhill, given the subject of this discussion, looking to you, as the discussion matters continue, looking to you, are you looking to move forward with a motion? What is your timeline? Are you, what is your thoughts given this discussion?
I think it's important for us to move forward with this prospect that we have. We could try to get some better information, resolve this before we go to council here again. I will say this, that the great thing about this owner is they will continue to own Lot Two in the building. They've put a lot of money into it, and they're a buy and hold in that respect, and so as part of the negotiation with whoever the new user will be, there will most certainly be as part of the diligence of that user, some thought that's put into the stormwater management, and we have likely the ability to accommodate what we need to on Lot Two, given the size of the parking lot and what's needed there today per code. So I think it'll ferret itself out during that due diligence phase, and I think because we'll have a property owner selling one piece, is going to retain the other, they'll have the ability to work with the new applicant and take care of all that, even if it's on off-site.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Is there precedence for after preliminary and final plat implementing a subdivision plan that would take exactly what Mr. Underhill said, if both parcels are then owned by the same owner, now having a subdivision plan that then puts the teeth in both, you know, it may be. it may be the 90-10, but parcel number 2 has, you know, 90% of, we now have a subdivision plan that says all of the water retention, detention, whatever the stake may be?
Well, I might add that, you know, having lived through many projects in Bridge Street, including our Pulte project that we always come back to, you know, I, I would be shocked if this wasn't topic A as we come through what is typically a three-step process with, with this group and detail, usually the engineering comes along with the final development plan and, and then the plats kind of just, you know, we've got the zoning regulations in your code and subdivision, and we're just kind of bringing it along for the ride to match what we do in the final. I think to the extent that there's something that needs to be revised in this plating process, we will certainly have ample time to do that as part of the development plan review if we had to. And there's other ways to accommodate these things through separate easements that aren't part of a plat. Sometimes I'm in favor of putting less on a plat rather than more, because I think that gives you flexibility to change things more easily over time. But I believe the engineering issues will ferret themselves out during that development plan review process.
Yeah, I, I am inclined to agree with that sentiment as to how the engineering will work out during development approval processes for either or both of the two contemplated lots. And likewise, because we, we don't have engineering in front of us or, or here this evening, I'm reluctant to condition, you know, a preliminary approval recommendation or even final plat approval recommendation on stormwater issues that we really don't have in front of us or, and that will be addressed during development approval.
Ms. Barton, could I have you display the conditions again? So, given this stage in the process, typically speaking, would we be looking to have engineering or would that be a later process where we would have engineering in front of us? So, preliminary and final development plan kind of stages?
I mean, as Aaron, Mr. Underhill stated, I mean, this would be a multi-step process where we would be looking at all these details as part of that and engineering would be engaged as part of that. I mean, they've been engaged as part of this, and this is not a concern that they've raised or, or in my mind worried about us resolving. So, I mean, it's been a very collaborative process, so we'll, you know, we'll work that out as we move through with, when there's development at hand.
Given that clarification by staff, looking back to the commission, I see enough head nods. Thank you, Mr. Underhill, and thank you, staff, for that deviation. At this time, I will entertain a motion. We have two items that we are hearing together, so I will entertain a motion on case 1, the preliminary plat.
Move to recommend approval of preliminary plat with two conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Schnair?
Yes.
Mr. Suplak?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. And on the second motion, sorry, on the second item, do I have a motion for recommended, recommendation of approval of the final plat with two conditions?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suplak. Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Suplak?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnair?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Thank you, gentlemen. It was very nice to meet you, Mr. Myers. You have a wonderful evening and thank you very much for spending your evening with us this evening. All right, staff, going back to you, it looks like we're on case number 3, the Dublin 2035 framework. This is an overview of the Dublin 2035 framework visioning process and a facilitated discussion, I like the technical terms, but facilitated discussion with the commission to provide transformative ideas for the future of the city of Dublin. Ms. Roush, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. As we have discussed before, 2035 is a council initiative, so we wanted to make sure to come before you all and get your input and hopefully had a chance to think through some ideas to the questions that we posed to you as part of this. But tonight, I thought I would give a little overview about what we've done so far and where we're going next, just so you can get a sense of where we are in this, in this process and what 2035 is really all about. So, as I mentioned, this was a directive of council coming out of their 2020 goal-setting session. They really wanted us to look forward and, and think of those big visionary transformative ideas that are going to get us to 2035. So, knowing that the city of Dublin is obviously a very transformative and cutting-edge community, what can we do to solicit these ideas and then, and try to implement those as we move forward? So, this framework really just came out of that, that directive, and we're really looking at, you know, how we would use this, these ideas and framework to guide community plan updates, projects, policy decisions, community collaborations as we move forward into the future, and a really an opportunity to stretch our thinking, think big, which is really hard as grownups, because we think of all the practical pieces. So, this is really to sort of put all the, what did you say the other day, Ms. Call? So, put up all the, no walls, basically, right?
No walls, and if you had a magic wand.
Right, exactly. So, you know, how are we, how are we doing this? Ultimately, this, you know, provides us with an opportunity to give these overarching goals and, and direct our updates in, in our big planning processes citywide, and not just for the planning division, but for all departments and divisions within the city. So, when we set out on the task for developing this 2035 framework, we really set this out into some big buckets of milestones so we could keep ourselves focused, because it's kind of a daunting project when you're thinking about how to initiate these big ideas and come forward with those. So, council had a work session at the beginning of this year where they spent some time focusing on what they would like to see, challenges, opportunities that the city has, and then ultimately defining how they were going to handle, handle this project. So, this began then with milestone 1, which is really developing those initial big ideas. So, city council, through their council committees tackled the four themes, and I'll, and I'll share what those are here in a minute, and really started generating those big ideas. So, we had lots of facilitated conversations with the council members and, and development, or excuse me, and directors from the different divisions throughout the city that supported each of those council committees. So, milestone 1, we completed at the end of May, and we are now in milestone 2. So, this is our big push to get expert engagement, public engagement, and we have had an expert engagement at the end of June where we had a futurist come and speak to city council and talk through what's, you know, some of the big think ideas out there in the world and how to push these ideas forward and have that community conversation. We've also begun our public engagement through July, we're going to wrap it up here in the next two weeks, but sending postcards to every residential property, all the business community has been contacted and solicited feedback. We have a questionnaire on the website, we have some staffed opportunities in the east and west classes as well. We have one coming up at the farmer's market, so we can get out there and talk to people and get their ideas as part of this milestone 2. We've also reached out to other stakeholders, including boards and commissions, but through the township and the school district. So, again, we're trying to cover all of our cross-sections of, of stakeholders within the community. So, we're, like I mentioned, trying to wrap up milestone 1 here in the next month or so, and we will have all those ideas ultimately generated and consolidated to be added to what council has provided thus far, within the hope of narrowing those down as we get into milestone 3, which is really refining those, looking at them, prioritizing, you know, of all these ideas, what, you know, what does council really want to focus on? Whereas the political will to move some of those forward, because they, if they're transformative, that means there are going to be a lot of, a lot of work, and how do we, how do we make that happen? With the ultimate goal then here in beginning of 2022, hopefully the adoption and implementation of that. So, as I mentioned, we're right at the end of 2, going into 3, but we wanted to make sure that we got before each of you to hear what you have to say. So, as I mentioned, in milestone 1, we, council did their introductory workshop, they also did a virtual training of the World Cities, which is an online conference, which again is from worldwide, looking at different international communities and same thing, lots of big ideas out of that. So, that was a really great opportunity for them to, to have that discussion and talk amongst each other. So, they were each assigned a session and then had to report out to the rest of council. So, that was really interesting to hear their, their outcomes as well. And then, as I mentioned, each committee did their facilitated discussion in April and May, and they had that initial big idea generation, and we had included that in your packet, just so you could see what that, what that looked like, what they were coming up with. And at the beginning of their discussion, council really wanted to identify, you know, what are the guiding principles? So, as we come up with these ideas and then ultimately have to narrow them down and prioritize, what are the sort of behind-the-scenes principles and actions that we, they really want to measure those against as they move forward? So, I won't read all these to you, but again, really looking at the community as a whole and trying to cover, you know, all these actions and ideas and making sure they really, they really transfer back to these principles. And again, we'll be using that as they move forward in, in winnowing down those, the list. So, as I mentioned, they established, or we established as staff and recommended this be sort of tackled in four themes. So, quality of life was handled by the administrative committee, and their focus was safety, engagement, city services, facilities, design, resiliency and sustainability. So, looking at all those factors that sort of make up the quality of life of the community. The second theme was infrastructure, which is the public services, so parking, communication, utilities. So, ultimately, again, all those things that are very technology, mobility, transportation based, that was their focus. And then land use was the community development committee, and that, again, dealt with housing and development, historic natural resources, special area plans, looking at, again, just the development piece of that. And then the last group was economics, which is the finance committee. So, anything that's fiscally related, future of work, we spent a lot of time talking about that, education, how to make our workforce tie into how we want to move forward, economic development strategy as well. So, I have on the screen here, and this was what was included in your packet, just, again, just a snippet of what was discussed. So, hopefully you had a chance to look at that and see, but again, really things that are, you know, bubbling up to the top, looking at, you know, we had such ideas as a regional sports complex, looking at, you know, Greenway, super Greenway through the city, the 15-minute city, so that, again, you can access things within a really small radius, digital events, and looking at technology as well as acquisition and, and annexation programs that help further development. So, again, and when you look at these, there are, and we've had a lot of discussions amongst staff and our consultant team, that, you know, there's a lot of these that can be grouped together really nicely to, maybe they're small things, but when you put them all together, they make this really grand idea. So, again, we're just trying to understand where everybody's head is at and how to, how to use, how to use these ideas moving forward. So, as I mentioned, milestone 2, we had our expert engagement and our public engagement, looking, looking to wrap that up here. And so, tonight, I'm here to hear from you about what your big transformational ideas are to propel the city forward into 2035, and, you know, any information or background to share about why you think this is a game changer for the city and if there's other things we need to look into, to help vet that in the future, that would be helpful too. We had council members and directors provide graphics, so if something comes to mind afterwards or you think you've seen an idea and you wanted to share that with us, that's, that's great to help illuminate your, your vision and your ideas. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about what this is and what we're doing, but otherwise, I'll, I'll leave it up to you all to share your thoughts, so.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. So, we are challenged to put our little creative thinking caps on and discuss what our big transformative ideas, and I don't know about you, if you found that forum on the city's website. I didn't get a postcard, so I know we were supposed to get postcards, I haven't seen one, but every resident of the city, every home in the city was supposed to receive a postcard, you know, soliciting this big transformative ideas from every person who lives in the city. But we're here to hear from the commission. So, anyone have an idea that they want to throw out that is your big idea? Mr. Schnair.
Actually, I had a question. I didn't see and I didn't come through everything. Were there specific, is there a specific category for city government?
That was largely under the quality of life, like government services and facilities. Yeah, that's-
You know, a big idea would be to radically change city government.
Okay, can you elaborate a little more on that?
Well, big idea is something that, you know, it's totally out of the box. I don't have a recommendation, but, you know, what's a what-if? What if this, you know, what if this commission didn't exist? You know, how would projects, how would it be, you know, Houston doesn't have zoning, historically hasn't had zoning. What if there weren't, what if this participatory form of government was deemed not to be the most effective way to get, you know, to get the city's objectives met? Would we have a city council? Would we have a mayor? Would we, would we merge with, you know, Miami-Dade, you know, Dade, City of Miami and Dade County merged city services? Would we merge with Franklin County and Delaware County and Union County? Would we, well, seceda has all sorts of connotations, but, you know, just, just a different form of representative government? Would it be a New England town hall where, you know, every resident appears everywhere and we don't vote, whoever comes to the meeting votes? So, I, I'm not advocating anything, but it's, we, we tend to be a little parochial that what we do is what we should do. And it, this is inherently, you know, was it Winston Churchill said it's the, you know, it's the worst form of government, but it's better than the, you know, I'm paraphrasing, but, you know, democracy sucks, but it's so much better than any other form of government, you know, so is, do we just sort of reexamine how we do this? Again, I'm not, I'm not going to go on record as saying I have a point of view like this guy thinks, you know, but it's fun. I mean, it's just sort of challenging to, to think of it in that way, because we're, we're thinking that the status quo should exist, at least with respect to us. When I say us, I'm saying government, not just, you know, this commission. So, that's my comment.
So, I'll piggyback one on that, and then I'll go in a totally different direction. City schools and city itself, covering the same area, you know, the township borders that encompass some versus not encompass some, I'm going to, you know, echo some of what Mr. Schnair said, not necessarily on the, the personal government, but we have residents of the city of Dublin who we're looking after their best interest, but they're covered by Union County, they're covered by Delaware County, they're covered by Franklin County. So, is there opportunity to, to change that and to make the city of Dublin looking after the city of Dublin and whether there's a hierarchy and we're all under one county? But it's very, very difficult when counties are voting against each other and, and everyone in Dublin is affected, but we're pitting, you know, different counties against each other in the same city. So, my vastly different direction.
Can I interrupt or piggyback on? I think it's, I think, and somebody may know the answer to this, I think the New, the school board, the schools of New York City report to city council.
Yep.
Which is, again, not right or wrong, but yeah, why do we have-
Different idea.
Why do we have a board of education and a city council?
So, my vastly different direction. We have a significant portion of our population that is aging.
That what?
That are aging.
Right. I thought that's what you said.
That, that, that was perfect timing, Lauren. And we're done. My big idea is we have also a very well-educated, very well-traveled population. It would be wonderful if we had a virtual vacation center. So, for myself, for the last 10 years, I wanted to go to Egypt, I wanted to go to Israel, I wanted to go that area, but at this point in time, I don't really deem that super safe, and so I don't go. But if we had some type of community center, convention center, where I could go on a virtual vacation and we're catering to not just the aging community, to, to my community, to, you know, newlywed couples who maybe couldn't afford the, the plane tickets to Egypt or Jerusalem, maybe this is a weekend event and it takes you one day, and you're not hopping on a 12-hour flight, a 14-hour flight to the Middle East, but you're participating in a virtual vacation. And perhaps that vacation involves a tour of the Louvre, and you're walking through and you're seeing those works of art. And now, we don't have to build our own- now, we don't have to build our own museum, we don't have to build our own pyramids, we don't have to build our own, you know, Colosseum. We can have it here in Dublin without leaving Dublin.
So I'm going to piggyback on that.
Okay.
How about this? I always struggle with, right, and I'm sure we all do, right? We got to think out of the box, we got to have a big idea, right? And I always think those are asking the wrong questions, right? Because then we come up with, that we come up with things that are, we offer things that are transformative, but what's the merit of them really? I.e., you know what I mean? Forgive me for the government switch, right? Like, you're not advocating, it's just a question, but it's a transformative thing. It's clearly a transformative thing. It'd be a big idea for that, for that reason. But it's like, would any of us advocate for it now, or what, you know, why not, why not? But that was the charge, that was the ask, what are big ideas, transformative ideas? So we answered, we were all good at doing the worksheet, or we did our homework, those types of things. And I guess I'm going to, I was, I think, at some point, right, I like that we engaged a futurist. Just so we all, we all know, and I saw the recap of it, the video of it, Nick seems to know things and trajectories, right? That's his job, that's what he studies. The gist of it, if you even back away, and he put on a pretty show, but if you back away from it, futurists are real, and the gist of what they do is very, very data-driven. They are planners at their heart, right? So I'm going to Moore's Law, right? Moore's Law is computers, doot, 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 smaller, tighter, faster, stronger, right? That's what Moore's Law is doing. So based on Moore's Law, the Internet of Things is real, it is going to happen. That, all you got to know is for 60 years, that trajectory's been going like this, it's data-driven, that future is inevitable. And of course, Moore's Law is, I think, the most well-known of all those trajectories, but there's others, right? I fly, I fly a drone. The drone, like, I don't have to, I kid you not, the controller, I don't even have to be holding it, the drone will hold its spot, the wind will blow it, it holds its spot GPS-oriented and adjusts, right? So there's that tech that is very real, and in the past 20 years has, is just exponentially, exponentially increasing. Oh, by the way, that's what allows, I don't know who did it, Blue Origins, was Blue Origins who landed a rocket backwards, right? Because that's the self-leveling gyroscope doing the same thing. That's the same tech, right? And so these tech, the gist of it is, these tech trajectories are telling us something, and that's usually how futurists work. They, those tech trajectories start to converge, and they tell you a future that's inevitable. So I guess I'm going to where you're going. You're citing a very specific example, it's kind of VR example, but it's kind of Google Streets example. It's kind of, all of a sudden you start putting it together, and, and yeah, there's, I mean, you know, Google did the glasses, that's real. They're working on more broader VR things, so you can walk around the street, and you can see Yelp reviews popping up. Well, it, like, that future, you know, it's a whiz bang, it's a cute, like, wouldn't it be cute if we did this thing and this thing and this thing? But you back up and unpack it, well, that tech trajectory's real. And with those tech trajectories, what could we do? What kind of ideas could we do that could effectively, if that future is inevitable in some way, shape, or form, that tech's inevitable, what can we anticipate in a really meaningful way? And I guess I'm, I went a couple different ways. I always worry, we asked, we asked the wrong question, right? Because a question about what's your big idea versus, I asked my wife, what do you love about Dublin? And she rattled off, green paths, quality schools with, oh, by the way, quality education. I love our, I love our activities, like the golf tournament, the Fourth of July, and Irish Fest, right? She does all this stuff, and we start to unpack some of that, and like, it becomes, it becomes not this transformative idea, but it's like, can we do more, make more memories, right? So the three, the three events that we all love, could we do, and I even go to, even on the Nick the Futurist, he started citing things out there in the world, right, that are like, in London, apparently in London, there's a Friday night bike takeover. So people just converge on the streets, and everyone knows it's going to happen, and bikes take over, and if you're in a car, forget it, right? It's really this social thing and this memory, and boy, if like, I'm not advocating for that, but like, there's all those, that long list of activities and things that are fun and cute and could, hot air balloon festivals, and, you know, all these cost money and whatever, but they start to build on what we already are in a really meaningful way. But that was a very different question than, right? Like, that's a very different advocacy of make memories and moments. That's a very different response than what's a transformative big idea, right? So that's me to say, I think sometimes, sometimes some of these exercises, I don't know what the answer is. Maybe this is me saying and advocating for us as a city, if we're posing these questions, like, there is, market researchers are real, they research in very specific ways, they ask questions in very specific ways to parse out. And then, and then, we've all done it, surveys where they ask the same thing, but in seven different ways, to get what you're really thinking about it. And I wonder if we've got that in our fold as we're digesting this. I wonder if the commentary on Nick, he did, put on a great show, and I would advocate for futurists do need to be around the table, maybe not him, but a futurist who's data-oriented around the table, so that they're talking about, the trajectory of solar is real, that's another trajectory that, by the way, Swanson's Law, like Moore's Law, solar keeps getting cheaper and cheaper and cheaper because it's a tech, unlike fuels, which are a commodity, which go, so solar gets cheaper. Oh, by the way, because it gets cheaper, we put a gazillion more units out in the, in the world every year. And if the trajectory is a 30-year trajectory, and if it continues, and like, you want to hear a future that is fun and inevitable, in like 15 years, it's possible we could have 100% of our power, our energy from the sun, right, worldwide. And the next year, we'd have 200% of the energy we do from the sun. And all of a sudden, you're going, boy, that just changes everything I was thinking, and how do we build that into their, into their, into the city in a meaningful way? By the way, they, he showed some of that, because I'm sure Nick has tuned into it, he showed a big Tesla's around this, there's a reason Tesla's around, because he's a futurist at heart. They showed a massive battery facility in Australia, because the problem with solar is that, right, the coal plant usually makes it and puts it in the system, and the system is live. Solar, if you're collecting, now you have a battery problem. So battery tech is coming on strong. Just to give you perspective, there's a good chance some companies, Fortune 100 companies, I'm sorry, I'm going, I'm going deep on this, I love this subject. There's a, there's a good bet, Fortune 100 companies know this. Google, Google, what GM announced, when you remember they had the Will Ferrell Super Bowl ad, Will Ferrell, Kevin Smart, you remember this? It was, they were all about EV batteries. So GM committed at the time, the next day their press release, so you saw the commercial, the next day their press release was by 2035, by 2035, same year, 100% of our offering will be EV. Right now, it's 5% of their total market. So it's, it's like, again, if we collect all that, how do you get it into all these vehicles? This tech is blossoming right in front of us. I think Biden yesterday said 50% of all cars by 2030, right? Like, this is, it's hidden back there, it's happening to us, we don't know. Forgive me. I think there's a lot of, like, we can't take this lightly. I think we have to wrap the right, it's one thing to have ideas, it's one thing to collect ideas. I really think we have to get serious about wrapping the right expertise around it as we digest said ideas, is what it comes down to.
So I do know, we can all get passionate about our individual perspectives, and right now, one of the things that we're being challenged with is, I'm sure, and, you know, Mark, you have contact with Jane on a relative regular basis, and their purview is, they have the breadth, and they have the making sure we're engaging the right people. And if we could ask staff to carry communication back and just make that recommendation, I'm sure that they're, they're forward-thinking and making sure that they're engaging the right expertise. However, this evening, we're being challenged by the city council to put forward, as their planning and zoning commission, our big ideas. And so if we could kind of circle back to big ideas, one that's very, very practical is gigabit internet to every home. We all see, you know, all of the fiber being laid, especially out West in those key cities, Austin was a recent city, Provo, Utah is one of the cities where that fiber is laid to every single home. And wouldn't it be nice if Dublin didn't have a spectrum versus WOW, who just got acquired contention, and it was now Dublin internet, especially considering Dublin really has a precedent for providing cutting-edge technology when it comes to connectivity around the colonial area. So back to big ideas.
Relative to that, let me ask a different question, Jenny, and maybe you, maybe know. I know on the city council's website, they have three current ideas, one of which is smart city oriented. Is this, is this, and then the fourth thing on their list was the 2035 plan. Does, is the 2035, maybe the way they're, the way they're talking and understanding, are those three going to be accomplished, or are they tucking into the 2035 plan?
It's honestly, I'm guessing it's sort of unknown at this point, depending on what the outcomes of 2035 are. I mean, those three that are out there are currently their, their major goals for this. This was really just looking at this visioning process for what this, what this could look like and help us to find that going forward. I mean, and that is definitely something that's, you know, staff and council are working on, is broadband for all. And they're looking at, you know, pilot programs and things like that of how to, how to do that. So that's, that's definitely in the works, so.
So then, looking to the rest of the commission, you gentlemen over there on my right have been very quiet this evening, at least on this topic. Any transformative ideas, those big ideas, and we're thinking magic wand, you know, six years old playing around in your Superman. What is, what is your big idea?
Well, as I look through the notes and what council's put together already, there's so many things in there already. I think this, though, is an example of Dublin's ability to use its resources in a very collaborative way, human and otherwise, and demonstrate their leadership in the Greater Dublin community. So how do you take that and all those items that are already out there, and then distill that a little bit? One I did pick up on is that, which I guess the finance committee is specifically tasked with, the economic, educational, et cetera, that line there. And okay, let's, if you just focus on that line, how do you come up with a big idea there? And I'm thinking, we need to have some sort of long-term mechanic mechanism that allows individuals to find their path, to add value to, not only to themselves, to their families, to their businesses, their communities. So you take all these things or these initiatives, you know, these are all, all a lot of great big ideas, but you want something like the trough that everything flows through and can grow out of over time. So that, you know, that collaborative effort between pre-K through postgraduate and lifelong learning, and how do those people that are in that, you know, whether it's with the university that's developing, or the, as the education system's developing, or businesses, big and small, they can tap into a community-led, a city-led effort that brings all these resources together and allows that stuff just to grow over time, not necessarily from one specific big idea or initiative. So you want each individual to continue to be able to strive to add value to themselves, and by that, they add to the community. So it's not anything specific, but I think we're really on a front end of this. And you want to try to, I know that the city works very well with the townships and the educational systems and all the other governing bodies in the multi-county or multi-state region, or the world. And I think that we just have to keep that moving forward and let all the great things that come out of that make this a place to live and work and play or visit. And so that's the only thing that I would think that they should keep in mind, is finding ways to allow individuals to keep adding value on into the future. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Wow, where do I start? So I'm a planner, right? So I do this. This is part, this is what I do in my day job, and Warren knows that. And, you know, I work with a lot of communities that are going through exactly the same process. And, you know, one thing that I've learned is that there's no new ideas, right? And you go through this, this list, I mean, there's just tons of great stuff here. Is it a big idea, or is it just a great idea? And I guess I would challenge the, does it have to be a big idea to be what we need? It could just be a great idea. And I think the, the way I would look at it is, what are the problems this community is facing over the next 10 to 15 to 20 years, or 30 years or 50 years, that we really need to address? And I think, and again, it's not new stuff. I mean, climate change is affecting everybody. So what is this community doing around climate change? And you go through this list, and it's electric cars, and it's, you know, there's a whole series of things, but that, that one thing as a big idea, we need to get on the bandwagon and really support it. And the other thing, I guess, I would say is, health is really important. And health permeates everything. And the fourth categories, I only saw health mentioned once. Each category should have health in the words, because, and health permeates just, not just from, you know, personal health, but the health of the environment and everything. So again, it's, you can't separate any of this, because it's all linked together. So I just think, community health, and there's, you know, again, there's organizations out there that are promoting this. ULI has their healthy communities, and, you know, that's got like 20 different categories that all go into creating a healthy community. And the same with sustainability, you know, there's organizations that are focused on that, have a whole list of things that everybody should be doing. And again, they're all overlapped and intertwined. I think one of the challenges that Dublin has is this whole issue of growth in our region. And Insight 2050, you know, we're planning for a million new people to move into this general area, and Dublin's part of it. And, you know, the initiative of density, and, you know, not just sprawl, right? We want to avoid sprawl, but thinking about density. And I think, you know, Bridge Park has been a great example of how this community can embrace density. But I think we need to do that 10 times what we've already done. And is this community right for density? And then back to the annexation comment that was in here, yeah, we could keep buying up more land or incorporating more and spreading out, but that's not the solution. And I think, you know, Insight 2050 is saying that, we don't need to build any more single-family houses, we just need to build more density. And so where's that going to occur? Bridge Park's almost done. What are we going next with density? So I think growth and density is something that we really need to focus on. I think the, the whole health is the connected green spaces, I thought was very interesting in here, or the words, I forgot the term, the super Greenway. We have absolutely fabulous parks all over the place, we have great trails, but not everything's connected yet. And I have to put a plug in for the Sider River and the Rapid Five project, because Dublin has a huge frontage on the Sider River, and a lot of it's not accessible. So how do we take a great asset like that and link it to all the other green that we have? And then, the third thing I wanted to mention was mobility. And I think Dublin's already, you know, we, there's a mobility study, there's a great efforts around mobility in, in the city, but we have to start thinking not about single-family cars. And that's going to be tough in a community like this. So, you know, do we have a bus system? Do we, you know, what's the other mobility options besides bikes and walking? Is there a micro-mobility? I think we could spend a lot more, and again, that goes back to sustainability and the environment, again, all interlinked. So, so all of that. And then I think, back to your point earlier about experiences, I think what people are looking for is the experience. What's the experience of the place? And most people don't want something fed to them, or maybe they do for a vacation, you go to Disney, but they're looking for authentic experiences. And, you know, we have a great historic district, are we really taking advantage of that from an authentic experience standpoint? So, and again, I could go on and on, like, all night. But I wanted to say that, I think a big idea is, how do we get this community to adopt the thinking that we need about the future? So Mr. Supalax's wife, I think, described Dublin the way that probably 80% of people that live in Dublin would describe it. They're not thinking about density, they're not thinking about sustainability necessarily, they're not thinking, to be successful, not only in the next 10 years, but the next 20, 30, 50, we have to get this community really thinking about. 20, 30, 50, we have to get this community really thinking about all of those issues and being supporters of it. So.
Thank you, Mr. Way.
That's all I have.
I have a couple more I just want to throw out there. So I, I design solutions for a living and so that's, you know, my brain goes to, okay, let me think of an idea, how could it be implemented? And I'm trying really hard to stay out of the implementation arena. But as I've listened tonight about some of the, the comments that Mr. Sner started with on blurring the lines or erasing lines on entities and, you know, whether their government, you know, my mind immediately then goes, well, education and, and, and public, private lines. We have McGraw-Hill right around the corner and I'm looking at public, private partnerships and education is very important to our community. So if we blur the lines and look at, again, piggybacking off of the virtual vacation, what if we had an education sector that, you know, Mr. Supalax's grade school daughter could go to the community center? Because virtual headsets, wow, they're great and it's like you're there, you can still run into a wall, you can still, you know, but if you had a big open white walled room and you're walking around and you're experiencing, what if you sat down and interviewed Winston Churchill? What if you went on a walk through an airplane hangar with Amelia Earhart? Blurring the lines and taking private entities, McGraw-Hill, who's around the corner and said, hey, you know what? You're in education, you're here to educate our kids, we care about educating our kids. We have a community center, we'd like to do virtual vacations and, and interviews. And if we collaborated and produced material that had me able to sit down and talk to, you know, George Washington and his writings are on record, we could, you know, that type of idea. And then I look at, you know, I'm, I'm headed over to see my brother who lives overseas and his wife graduated from medical school with no debt, she's German. She was in the medical school track when she was in middle school because that's what she wanted to do and that's what she had aptitude for and everything else. And that's the way that they educate their kids. And if we partnershiped with our Dublin education systems and our medical facilities here and we provided those specialty high school experiences where instead of being enrolled in college credit plus or these programs that are very strict and they have, you know, a few classes that you can take and oh, by the way, the university that you're going to doesn't necessarily accept that in their matriculation plan. But rather if we had a university here that was sponsored by the different, we want to be technology centric, we look at the futurists and say the IOT is, is the future. If we looked at specialty high schools in the city of Dublin, especially if we were forward-thinking enough to allow other residents outside of the Dublin bubble to participate and they could go on a track that is, I am a computer science major, I'm in the seventh grade. And now in the ninth grade, I am one class a day going over to, my company is a technology company, so XYZ company, and I sit with a developer for one hour a day. And I decide, I don't want to do that anymore. And I then go the next year, I'm in the medical, medical path and I decide I want to be a surgeon. Not only that, I want to be a robotic assisted surgeon. And so now I split my time and I'm in a robotics high school class and I'm in a, a medical school class. And now I graduate from high school by going to my next class that is part of the public private partnership with education. But now I graduate and I worked my way through, I contributed to the medical school, I contributed to the education and maybe I even graduated without a bill. Wouldn't it be cool if we could merge education with government with, with everything together where our population is educated, especially if we expand our borders on, on who actually gets qualified to have this education? And now those people are contributing members of society and passing along and now they want kids, when they're 30 years old and they're the robotic assistant surgeon, they want kids to come in because that's how they got their start. I just think that would be really cool.
Can you turn the floor? Anybody else want to go? Cause I got more.
You can all go, I can go, keep going deeper.
How about this? I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and wrap mine up.
How about we do Mr. Fishman?
Are you ready?
Oh, go ahead.
Been ready. I, I actually, actually, everybody said some things I've been thinking about and I, I think that, that Mark was fantastic. And one thing he said that I was going to say is that we have to build on what we have. And, and without the battery, we would have the EV cars and, and, and the same thing in Dublin. His wife mentioned all those things that I say about Dublin every day, but I also hear things that people don't like about what's going to happen to Dublin or what's happening. Heavy traffic, high density, it, it, there's going to be higher crime with density and so on. So those things, I think we need, we need to build on them. I think the sky is the limit and I think we, there's all.
For clarification, we don't need to build on higher crime.
No, I said we don't build on the good. It was obvious, I, yeah.
Didn't make it into.
No, no, we build on the good things. I'm saying that, that, that those are things that could come and those are the things people don't want, obviously, but, but we can head the right direction, you know, and, 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 and build and, and we're, it's going to happen one way or another. And, and, and it, the, boy, we did come up with some grandiose ideas, merging the governments and all that stuff. I can just see the nightmares, the, the, the people in the bureaucracy saying, hey, you're not going to take my job, you know? And, and, and so, but I, I think that all the ideas are good, but I think we've got a great foundation. And I, I hate to sound like an old man, when I think back, when I got here in the 1972 and this town was a little village, it could have gone any direction, okay? And the, the people were there that directed it the way we like it. And I think that that's, that, that can, can, can continue. As far as grandiose ideas, wouldn't it be great if we can eliminate traffic? And, 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 and that might, that could happen if we had that way. I mean, cars could disappear, okay? And eliminate traffic, eliminate pollution, stop climate change. Those are things that, that we have the ability to do if we can, we head the right direction. You know, electricity was discovered by accident, you know? And, and I, I recently read the story a long time ago, I read it and I read it again about the microwave oven. The guy had a Hershey bar in his pocket and all of a sudden it was melting when he was experimenting with microwaves. He died of cancer, by the way.
I'm sure.
But, but, but it's true, true story. But, but, but everybody in, in the, in the first world has a microwave oven now and that, think of the quality of life that, you know, in, in one and a half minutes, you have your eggs are done, you know? And, and so I, I think that, that we just have to, on a smaller scale, is people in Dublin that have a little bit of power to, to make something beautiful or not beautiful and make people attract, the right people attracted to Dublin. I think we have to just focus on going the right direction and the things your wife said, keeping those, but building on those things.
More of less of, right?
Yes, yeah. So I think that's.
Start, stop, continue.
Could I just interrupt and clarify for Mr. Fishman, who I know is not in favor of either higher crime or microwaving our residents?
Thank you, Mr. Sner.
Thanks very much. I didn't want that to go on the radio. If I was, if I was getting off my soapbox and just doing, just doing ideas here, Jenny, I, I would say moments and memories, right? To the point of, to the point of, this is where we go. We've all done more of less of exercise, we've done start, stop, continue, right? If I was just saying it and backing up, independent of Irish Fest and whatever, I would say those are memory, moments and memories, can't, that we have some great ones and we walk to them and it is remarkable, can we make more of that? And I don't know what that list is, but that's, that's somebody going out and finding long lists of these opportunities. It might be the fun committee that, you know, I mean, shouldn't be, shouldn't be called that, but let's just be clear. But let's just be clear, it shouldn't be called the fun committee, but moments and memories, you're right, like there's a real thing there and if we build that, people will continue into the, into perpetuity. I love Dublin, right? I love it for all these things. And we will be, be a beacon. I would advocate right now for, I wish Dublin had, I'm going to say, I don't know, aesthetic presence, geographic presence, right? Like you, I'm going to go to a really extreme scenario, Sienna in Italy, right? Like it's this medieval town in a Tuscan country and, you know, there's the, there's the fields and then the town and you're inside of it and you know it, right? Like even, even New Albany, right? They got the fences and I'm not advocating for fences because there's maintenance costs there and I'm not, I don't want that. But you know you're in New Albany, right? We don't have gateways, we don't have, and I know we have language in the code for it, but like I think it's a bigger undertaking than waiting for the next development project to do it. I think it's like, I even get, you get off the highway, I think, I feel like 62 in Gehanna, they have a thing you pass under. This, this internet exchange, not internet exchange, this, this expressway exchange, I don't know if we participated with that, but man, is it, does it look incomplete, right? In between, in between 33 and one, and 270 and it's like all these gateway moments.
I was so thinking they were going to put a shamrock in that because it looks like it needs a shamrock. It is the crock. I so thought they were going to put a shamrock.
You guys probably know better. I'm, I'm guessing they were trying to make plaid, like with the whatever, but it's just, it's so incomplete and it's like, that's, that's, that's basically a gateway to Dublin. We, we've got other places, like how do you know you're here? And is it, you could pick one of those towns we just referred to, Gehanna, I feel like also has a certain style of street lamp that sort of allows it, something like that, that you know you're in Dublin, right? There's a, there's a presence, there's gateways, there's something. We say a lot, there's a lot of, of ideas on the sheet that sound like, can we be completely green? Could we do an education thing? Could we do a whatever? And I'm going to, I'm going to back up and say, I'd really like it if we led the way, right? If we did something remarkable, everybody in town, Dublin is that city over there that everybody's got one gig, right? Like that, and what's the example of all those that we are the leader in it, we are, we did this remarkable thing, right? So moments, memories, presence, lead the way. I, I'm going to say relative to the, to the, to the whole commentary on solar and EVs and all that stuff. And again, it's on the list, right? IOT is on the list because these, these are inevitable and they're coming. But, but to the point of, I was trying to unpack it and I, I think the futurist's kind of commentary is a critical part to unpack. We have to anticipate that. We have to anticipate these trends. I also think, right, doing trends, we're all doing trend stuff now for how work is going to or is not going to come back. We had this grand experiment, hybrid work is real, it's going to continue to perpetuate. Pandemic productivity is a thing, you can Google it and everybody left and right says it was great, people actually kind of worked more, bosses liked it, we liked it, right? Like if we don't drive to work, right? If this only continues and we don't drive, we drive, continue to drive to work, far less, where are we driving? In which case, yeah, to the whole push of pedestrian and taking back streets and, you know, that type of thing, there's, we just have to be tuned into, to the point of the demographic trajectories and the populous trajectories and all that stuff and anticipate, anticipate, anticipate appropriately. And then I love the way you said blur the lines and you, we could pick the thing, right? Doesn't matter what, like that's all you're doing is, we should just find ways to blur the lines and education would be a great one, health would be a great one, right? Like the sort of community center vibe would be a great one. Can we continue to find opportunities to blur lines? And maybe that starts to help us with lead the way and anticipate and those types of things. But those are, those are my five, moments, presence, lead the way, anticipate, blur the lines. I like it. Thank you.
Love it. Mr. Way.
I just wanted to just echo a couple points you made. One, gateways was, that was actually on the top of my main list. Our gateway, our regional gateways are Tuttle Mall, right? This one out here, 161 and Somme Road. That's what people experience when they get off the regional highway system and come into Dublin. You drive down 161, what do you see? You drive down Somme, what do you see? Tuttle Mall. I think those are three areas where we could really, really do something bold and different and say welcome to Dublin, so.
When the 33, when 33 happens, it's a highway right. Sorry. When 33 happens to Highland Cry, massive opportunity on that side, yeah.
Well, you go down 33 and there's, you've got those gateways too, right? That's on my list too. What, just one other, one other point is, you know, we talked about growth and density. The word I forgot to add to that was mixed use. We have to start, stop building more single use places and taking the single use places that we have and turning them into mixed use environments because that's how we're going to create life, excitement, avoid, you know, again, it's, it's not a, a workplace that at the end of the day, everybody's gone and it's a dead place, right? Every place has got people living there, people working there, people shopping there. And it, it, it helps with the density, right? But it also helps with just creating community.
I'm going to piggyback on one thing and then I'm going to turn some time over to Mr. Fishman, just on the, the mixed use. Also challenging, you know, I'm thinking back to Oak Park, when we saw Oak Park and we saw that front parcel that converted from a mixed use to a, because they couldn't find people, having the city, city invests in economic development. We have land that we then build, you know, partnership with spec buildings and everything. We've seen applications like that. So wouldn't it be cool if, understanding that we're going to need mixed use, we do some type of acquisition, partnership, whatever that looks like, again, blurring the lines to secure, because what did it turn into? It turned into more single family homes because that was in demand right now, but fast forward, and maybe that's not the use. Maybe we needed the backside of Oak Park to develop higher density. Maybe we needed a pocket of higher density. Maybe we needed commercial in that area because now we're not driving and now we need a corner grocery store because we sold one of the cars because both adults in the home stay home. So all of those types of things, if, rather than waiting for the applicant to say, okay, there's no economic viability in my parcel and therefore I'm coming forward with an application to rezone, to re-whatever, having that economic development committee going out and talking to property owners where either redevelopment is imminent, we all look at Metro Place and, you know, we talk about redevelopment, could big ideas be implemented there, again, blurring the lines and implementing some of these, whether they be technological or educational or health or anything else? So, Mr. Fishman.
I think it was a good point, it's mixed use. You know, we got away from mixed use. If you look at neighborhoods of the 30s and 40s, every neighborhood had a corner grocery store. You were no more than four blocks from, from some kind of grocery store or Landrum at or whatever people needed. And, and we start putting subdivisions and we got away from that. But anyway, I forgot what I was going to say.
Also, if you look at 30s and 40s, it was usually the person staying home who didn't have transportation. So I had to walk to the store because the other person did or did not have the one car that the family owned going to a work destination. So are we just repeating, to Mr. Way's point, no new ideas? Are we just repeating a cyclical pattern because of the new normal?
I, I like Mark's thing with memories and I think that's what people think of when they think of a town. By the way, I was, two Saturdays ago, I was on the bridge, our bridge, the Justin Bridge. And I, I like to talk to people and, and there was hardly anybody from Dublin. These people were all from out of town. In fact, I, I, a friend of mine is a person of color and he was with me and he said, boy, this is really a diverse community, okay? Because, because there were people from everywhere, you know? And so, so the bridge is a start, okay? It, it, it brings people here and, and people were taking, I can't tell you how many pictures I took of people. You know, people were saying, oh, can you take my picture? You know, and, and I mean, and, and so we've really become a tourist town because of that bridge. And so we need to build on those things. I, I know what I was going to say now. I was on the committee when, when we were going to have this fabulous entrance on 33. The guy from New York had made the cement pieces, they made carvings in the cement pieces, okay? And when I left that meeting, I thought, man, this is going to be spectacular, we're going to have, the, the ideas that we gave were big shamrock in Dublin and, and all those things. And look at it now, okay? I, I guess they didn't really.
It's like they forgot to mow.
Yeah, exactly.
Pretty much what it is.
But we spent hours in that committee talking about those things and people had great ideas about three dimensional things and, and Dublin and all that. And it, I don't know where they went, but he still sold the thing, the things, I notice there's some brews in it or something now, but, but like Kim says, it's, I think we, that's something that brings people to town too.
Yeah. By the way, I want to, I lit up because I wanted to circle back and I agree with you on the river. It's inaccessible and in large part. And so amenities like that, realizing amenities like that. I, I know, I know the bridge is not, or the dam is not ours either, but man, do I, like I just wish the dam could just be so much better, right?
What? What?
I just wrote down water community.
Yes, yes, yes.
Can we engage? We are a city that has a, a, a river going right through it.
Even before the pedestrian.
Has a dam at the north end.
Even before the pedestrian bridge, let's agree, though, thinking about walking across 161 and a little walk next to the bridge, like it's, that's just a horrible, like even that can, I, I don't know if we have any sway on any of that. I know you guys have probably advocated long and hard, it's not our street, I, I think it's, you know, someone else's. But, but to the point of like even just making that more of a, a connector piece and all those little touches, they all add up and opening, clearing access to the river in various spots.
And we have some hidden things like Shaun Falls. Most people don't even know that's there, okay? And, and I mean, that's really cool if you walk back there.
The teenagers know.
I would, yeah, they do.
So even dumb little things like, I, I would love to see, we have those planners that are spaced way too far out across 161 on the river, throwing gabion baskets to separate the pedestrian traffic from the vehicular traffic that, that create that, I mean, Dublin's a green community. You can do gabion baskets that are, you know, drought resistant and that sort of thing, though we don't really need that much here, that then have the safety, so to health, but also beautification and also engaging the river more and more so that people want to go down there. Now you're walking across the bridge, you see the river, you happen to see a really well-done canoe, raft, rental or whatever place. Wouldn't that be nice? Mr. Way.
I would urge you to check out the Rapid Five project on the Morphe website. You'll see all sorts of ideas for the side of river through Dublin. So, and that's a regional initiative, very exciting.
Back in Utah, I served on the Jordan River Commission. So I was on the Utah Lake Commission and the Jordan River Commission and we had some fantastic experts who came in, who spoke to different things, but really engaging and becoming more and more of that water community. You look around the city of Dublin and you see no ends of fountains, no ends of those retention basins. We are a water community. Okay, looking back, anyone else wanna jog?
I would, but I'm not gonna go. Continue.
So staff, while I imagine that you've had opportunity to participate in the same type of visioning, are there any things that you want to share with us or that you want to offer, not requiring by any means, but any, any ideas that you throw the other direction?
Tripping me up here. Uh, again, I mean, I think this has just been a great discussion. I love how, I think Jane will be sad that she's not here to hear all your, your excited discussion about this, so I'll tell her to watch. Um, no, this is really good and I think your, you know, initial questions and thoughts about, you know, are we asking the right questions and, and making sure we're sort of framing this up in the end to, you know, bring this forward in a way that makes sense? I think that's, that's, it's good. It's good for us to think that through, right? You're not just asking the question to ask the question, why are we asking this question? And how are we gonna make this meaningful, right? And then, and the memories part, I mean, I think that's key. I feel like that's every, after COVID, I feel like that's been everybody's sort of general change of, of paces. You know, how do we make something meaningful? Cause it's, you're together more and you have the opportunity to see maybe what you're missing with your busy life, so, um, and communities help you do that, so.
I might, I might offer that, I know there was some, again, Nick showed something about talking light poles, which, you know, take or leave. But that too is, I think, of that ilk, right? Like memories and, memories and remarkable and, um, so that's one idea, but there's lots of them and how do we foster that?
Awesome. Great discussion. Thank you all very much.
During the course of the discussion, have we received any public comment on the item?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I didn't hear my computer ding, so we're good.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
So it looks like we are training the Dublin Community Plan. This is an overview of the Dublin Community Plan, which is a guiding policy document intended to provide a foundation for decision-making and implement, implementation over time. So Ms. Holt, it is very nice to meet you.
Good to meet you and thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Really glad to be here.
Ms. Holt, as you are new and we are new to you, I, I'm sure that you've heard kind of some of our personalities tonight and gotten to know us a little bit better, but would you mind providing an introduction to us so that we get to know you a little bit better?
Okay. Uh, we are new to Dublin and moved here for all the same reasons that have been discussed tonight. Uh, my husband is originally from Ohio. I graduated from Ball State in Indiana and I've been a landscape architect and planner for more years than I will admit. Um, most of my career has been in Colorado in very fast-growing communities along the Front Range and was most recently planning director in Greenville, South Carolina, where they have the first bridge, but not necessarily the best bridge. I know, I know.
Well, welcome, Ms. Holt. It is wonderful to have you. You're joining a fantastic team, so we are very glad to have you.
It's very evident I am extremely excited to be here, so it's, it is a wonderful team.
Wonderful.
So with that, um, as our introduction to each other, I was asked to make a, a little presentation as kind of a brush-up for the commission on community plans, area plans and codes and the hierarchy and interrelationships of all of those different documents. And I'm just gonna jump right in and we'll start with the community plan and I think as Commissioner Fishman said, the sky is the limit with the community plan. This is an overarching vision for the entire city. It's the biggest picture. It's a policy document, not legally binding and it's not static. It's meant to kind of roll with times and trends. Uh, typical topics are listed right there. You'll remember those from our own community plan. And I wanna make sure that everyone knows how to find the community plan on the website or on your OneDrive. And if you don't, I put my card there at each of your chairs, so if you don't, feel free to give me a call, I will help you find that information. So typical terminology that you would see in a community plan, um, it primarily focuses on a future land use map. And these are suggested land use types such as commercial or residential or maybe even mixed use as we were just talking about. Uh, this is not a regulatory or a zoning document. It is just a visionary document. We use that future land use map to compare rezoning requests to. Uh, you will also see in that document a thoroughfare plan where suggested needed road links and locations are shown. Again, this is not engineering, it's not the final location, it is a suggestion and the acknowledgement of a need to get from A to B. And as Commissioner Way talked about so much, connectivity is a big topic in the community plan and this really is kind of a two-pronged idea. Uh, it's multimodal, meaning different ways of getting around, whether it's vehicular or what I like to call human-powered, like walking or biking. And then it's actually linking neighborhoods and nodes which can really help reduce the number of vehicle miles traveled and the number of cars on the street. So moving right along to the special area plan, and if the community plan was kind of the 30,000-foot view, the special area plan is the 15,000-foot view. So this is a finer scaled version for a smaller geographic area. Again, it's not legally binding and it's not meant to be static. It's just kind of, where do we think we want to head with this particular area? And you see your typical topics listed there that you recognize from a lot of our different plans. We have about a dozen plans and we'll take a look at the Dublin Corporate Area Plan a little bit later, just as kind of an example of the importance of all of these plans and codes working together. And again, hopefully everybody can find the special area plans on either the website or the OneDrive. Related terminology that you might see is a little bit more detail on public input than from the community plan. Um, we might talk about the type of community meetings that were held and some specific concerns rather than the global concerns that you might see at the, the community plan. For example, if we're particularly interested in economic development for a particular area, we might do a market analysis where, you know, we compare some goals and maybe do some beta testing on some specific sites. Um, the land use recommendations are gonna be more specific here and they will be based on those specific goals for the area, which again, might be economic development, it might be environmental preservation, or for something like historic Dublin, it would be architectural preservation. And finally, we come to the city zoning code and this is where it gets a little bit different. So this is the most finely detailed, of course, and it is the legally binding stuff. It's lot-specific, it's fairly static by design. It takes a recommendation from this commission to city council to make any changes and then city council needs to approve or deny that. Um, this is more of like the 500-foot view and in some cases, the one-foot view is, you know, where we're talking about particular, um, cross-access easements or stormwater issues and we are talking about the real specifics on that particular lot. And again, we see our typical topics of discussion. And, you know, this is also an interesting area where, while we're looking at the code, we're also looking back upstream to the area plan and the community plan to make sure that the direction that we're going is what was envisioned. If it isn't, we ought to have a really good reason why maybe we're diverting. So related terminology here, we've all heard these things, primary uses versus accessory, rights of way and easements, we talked about some of that tonight, lots versus tracks and reserves, all that fun stuff. So just kind of taking a, a little bit of a side-by-side view and a, and a review here. The community and area plans look at, again, the big vision and the policy. It's what do we want to be? What do we want to look, look like? Little to no constraints, kind of like the 2035 discussion that you all just had. Um, and again, we use these at rezoning requests. And then the city code, referring back to the visioning documents, but we use these, or the city code we use for zoning subdivision, the preliminary development plans, the final development plans. And again, this is where all the legal goodies come in and it gets serious. Um, it's limited by reality with utilities and infrastructure, again, the legal precedent and economics. But all three of these documents combined together to lead to the built environment and this is where it becomes so important. So if, if we look at the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, which is kind of the perfect example to look at, um, let's just kind of run through this and see where we're at. And this is, um, pertinent right now, it's gonna be before you next month. We've been working on it and, and looking at it in some detail. So the community plan says that the de-cap area ought to encourage mixed-use development to allow people to live, work, shop, learn and play in close proximity. Okay, so we get kind of a general idea of what that looks like. And then the area plan vision statement starts to fly down closer and say amenities are most needed on France, including full-service restaurants, very specific. And then worker, workers in the area are requesting a walkable development, just like some of the things that we were talking about for the 2035. So now our vision is, is really starting to get pretty specific and, and we can picture what that might look like. And here's where it gets interesting. And this is where staff, staff's job gets important, your job gets important, where we look at the current zoning code and we see, for example, in this area, restaurants are conditional uses, which require extra review and time. So we all know time is money and it makes it harder to allow those wanted uses. So hmm, we're at, you know, we're counter to what we've said we want. And also, the city code says that we require a maximum of 50% lot coverage. If you have a lot that's maybe five acres in size and you can only cover half of it, but you wanna walk to next door or down the road, that starts to turn into quite a trek. And that's why we are looking at updating the zoning so that these things all mesh. And I, I really think that this is one of the most important areas that we have responsibility for, is making sure that everything is meshing and leading us towards the visions that we are saying we wanted. So I got a little bit ahead of myself, but anyway, we need to be constantly ensuring, verifying and confirming at every step that what we're expecting is what is really happening. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or entertain any discussion, but thank you for indulging me for that little bit of a brush-up.
Well, thank you. You did an excellent job on your first presentation to this board. So looking to the commission, any questions? Mr. Fishman.
Yeah. Thank you. Boy, I, will you take care of me, I appreciate it. Anyway, um, uh, you mentioned, you said, we want smaller lots and people to walk next door to their neighbors, so on. I think, um, there's gotta be balance. And I think that one of the things people love about Dublin, as Mark said, is green space, open space. When I ride my bike through Dublin and I see these big lots, I, one of my favorite rides is down Dublin Road and, and you see the big lots and you can see the river and so on. And so I think that, that we've gotta be real careful in that area. And by the way, I, I'm confused. I was involved in two previous community plans that the city had. You, you, you didn't say, you know, we had community, we've had community plans through our history. Okay, I thought you said that.
Absolutely.
But, but, and, and both of them, we emphasized open space and low density. And as we were talking in our earlier discussion, one thing I did mention was, what we always talked about was balance. Um, in fact, if Bridge Street gets too big, we change the complete character of the city. Uh, we have to balance that with, with open areas, green space, bigger lots, different, different things for different people. So, uh, you said yourself, you were attracted to Dublin for all the things that Mark mentioned. So I, I think it's dangerous when we talk about, um, immediately more density, more density. I think we, it's real important we balance that, so.
We always keep in mind the totality of the vision.
What?
We keep in mind the totality of the vision. So the, all of the things that make Dublin great, we need to maintain.
To grow. That's what we talked about earlier.
Exactly.
To grow on that and, and so.
All right. I, I just have one other kind of question and it's not necessarily directed, um, to you, but to all of staff. I'm looking back at some of the applications that we've seen, some of the implementations from those applications that maybe, you know, I, I look at some of the successes. There's one right, right down the road here, the, the funeral home, the mortuary that, that's here down the road, that's just a beautiful building. But then I look at some of, some maybe more contentious applications that we've had recently where. where we are looking at that balance, and sometimes it's the, you know, the NIMBY kind of approach to something. But none of us here has been, with Mr. Way's probable exception, in your shoes, where you're looking at measurements, you're looking at the nitty-gritty details. You do an excellent job at preparing staff reports. But when we're looking at zoning requirements, and we're looking at making a change from a required 10-foot setback to an eight-foot setback, and we're saying, okay, well, if the if the standard before was 10, and we're looking in a different neighborhood where the balance is is merited to reduce to an eight, but what we're thinking of 10 is the previous implementation, not requirement, previous implementation, and we're referencing all of our knowledge of the city, but previous developers didn't stick to the 10, they went 16, they went 20. You know, obviously, we know the difference between 20 and 10 visually, but we don't necessarily know the difference between 12 and 14 visually, especially when it's two houses next to each other and then the distances. So have we thought about, or ought we think about zoning implementation versus requirement? As we come forward, and now we're saying, okay, new zoning regulations, we're revisiting this area plan, and we're looking at setbacks, and we're looking at this, and we're looking at that, and we're saying, previous versus now. If we do like we did when we saw one of the other applications recently where we said, okay, across the city, how was it zoned versus how was it implemented? If we do that type of exercise, then, you know, my feeble brain, when I'm sitting up here comparing a 16-foot shared setback to a 14-foot shared setback, but visually, I I'm remembering 24 and thinking, ah, shrinking that by two foot, no problem. But it's actually a 14-foot shrink.
Very well.
If if we think about that implementation, we look at, you know, Mr. Fishman and I have talked before about Donegal Cliffs and the zoning requirements under that, and the, you know, the subdivision plan and all of the documentation that we may or may not have on file because of how long ago it was implemented versus the subdivisions we're approving now. And then we're wondering, as we drive through the neighborhood, how claustrophobic it is, but it's single-family homes, and would it have been a better use to have townhomes, mixed-use, something else in that area? Because what we thought we were getting was single-family homes like we saw in Donegal Cliffs. So just an item out there as we're going through and refreshing on what is a community plan, what is the area plan, what is the special area plan, all of that. It it may be worth our while into the future to do those types of exercises, mostly for those of us sitting up on this side.
And I think that ties in nicely to some previous discussions that we had about neighborhoods and what makes good neighborhoods and and the feelings, and it's sometimes it's a feeling and not a requirement, right? So how do you translate those to something that you, when you're looking at developments or proposed developments, how do we make that sort of fit what your vision is? And we've definitely had some internal conversations about how to move that discussion forward, because it's a really, it's kind of a hard conversation to have. And I know that Ms. Fox had, you know, talked to us about a particular resource in pocket neighborhoods. I think she mentioned that. So we've been looking at that and different housing types, and and we're doing a housing study that's currently underway for requests for proposals to to sort of evaluate that so we can have an understanding from a citywide perspective what we have and how we can, you know, attract different housing types and and meet the community's needs. So I think this is really actually really great, great timing for us to have this conversation, because it helps make your memory of your neighborhood and what your experience was like growing up here and balancing all those those pieces and parts. Because Bridge Street is important and the design and the feel of that for people that want to live there, but Dublin also is very known for its single-family residential and that being part of our community feel and character. So how do we balance all those pieces and?
There's good examples.
Mr. Way? He was, Mr. Way?
It's it's okay. I'm patient. I just wanted to say that other governing bodies like this that I've been engaged with have asked for field trips when they're, they want to see something and have somebody explain to them what the development's going to look like.
Rosemary Beach.
It sounds like a good place.
We've done city, you know, road trips. We've gotten on a bus and visited different areas.
I joke about Rosemary Beach, but I guess I was going to, what I was going to say was there's there's regardless, there's good examples and bad examples of all these things, of pocket neighborhoods. Rosemary Beach, if anybody's been there, right, is is like seaside. It's it's really, really, really planned. They did it well. It's high-density, single-family homes, right? They've done it well. There's places we've seen the same kind of thing not done well. And likewise, mid-rise, like mid-rise density is, well, sometimes good, sometimes bad. I I think there's, I I continue to think, I think there's merit to looking at good case studies and sort of just walking through and like what makes Rosemary Beach compelling and.
So so we could ask staff to provide us with more case studies if we want to see comparables.
Absolutely.
We can go visit sites if we're confused about setbacks. We can go visit other communities and what they're doing, maybe, and just seeing what best practice. And I don't know how far we can go, but maybe in this region. And then we can ask applicants to provide us with any kind of graphic information to help us better understand their proposal. And I I've been involved in projects where the community wanted to see the growth of trees over a 10-year period at like year-year intervals, so that the applicant had to provide a rendering or photo montage of how the trees were going to grow over a number of years and how big they would get at at full at full growth. So, I mean, there's tools that we probably, I don't know, I'm new to the commission, so I'm just saying that there's tools that we can use to help you all, all of us, better understand what what we're approving.
Additionally, we do have an education budget. So, you know, we've talked about that before. I don't know how many how many of us have implemented. I know I'm guilty of having not implemented or requested any allocation of that education budget. But I do think that the city does a good job at at presenting information, the fact that we have the architect consultant now. That's something that I think we all have wanted over the last few years. But any ideas, especially, you know, all of us are out of our neck of the woods quite on a regular basis. As we find those case studies, I encourage everyone, whether that's staff or the commission, to submit information to staff. I I know of one development that I love that's out in California, that they did a fantastic job in reversing the whole parking-out front model. And it's mixed-use, and it has office uses integrated with big-box stores, which is really hard to do, and they did it beautifully. So next time I'm out in that neck of the woods, I plan on taking a million pictures and a video walkthrough. But all of us, I think that we have opportunity to pull blinders away, and, you know, again, I'll go back to blur lines, pull blinders away and and look for those good planning principles, those good, we look at the ideation versus the implementation and providing ourselves the perspective, understanding what the broad strokes, the community plan, and what the implementation zoning code, because we're kind of at the crossroads. Mr. Fish?
Well, I I thought the presentation was excellent, and I I thought the the example about Fran's Road put it in in sharp relief. And I, when I hear, you know, for example, when you hear green space, we we all, we immediately have a, you know, sort of a positive connotation that, sure, you know, Dublin's all about green space, we want more green space. But to your point, we also want walkability. And a lot of green space is a lot of place to cover, walking. So what's the opposite of green space is density. So you, how do you reconcile those inherent conflicts? And I think that we, because we have to get caught up in the minutiae of setbacks, that we often don't sort of take the 30,000 or 50,000-foot view about what should the, you know, the community plan, what should the goals be? And obviously, there's a balance, and it's it's site-specific or neighborhood-specific. But, you know, tacking on to our previous conversation, if you ask, if you ask 100 people in Dublin what they, not what they like about Dublin, but what they want to see in Dublin, a lot of them will say more green space. A lot of them will say more restaurants. A lot of them will say more multi-use, you know, a lot of them will say more density, because there's different demographics that that want that. I just sort of, it's a tough job for us, but I think it's, I I would like you to help us, you know, meet these challenges, because frankly, I think it's pretty easy to say, the code says eight feet, and you want 10, nah, you're going to stick with eight, you know, instead of what is the the general purpose and what are we trying to accomplish?
Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, well, I'm just itching. I I think I I think that that Kim made some excellent points, and and I, we talk about, we we've talked about green space a lot. It's, it, people like Kim, that and and the architects of the world that know how to to play with the the green space and make it look like it's more than it is. For example, Mirfield, I was involved in Mirfield when it first came in, the the side setback, you're talking about side setback, is seven and a half feet. However, there's huge islands in in almost every street and court in the in the first early phases of Mirfield, when they had the seven and a half-foot setback. So and and the houses were set back, they they had a definite building line. And so when you drive into a a court or down a street, you think, wow, these are, look at all this green space. Well, the green space is in Center Island. Now, by the way, Mirfield, and I think it still is, was is is 1.25 units per acre. So it it isn't very dense, okay, but you're counting the golf courses and the open space and all that, and all that stuff's green. So I think there, guys like, not picking on these or architect, but picking on him, that that they're skilled, and I I watched him at Metropolitan Club, by the way, too, and he is skilled, I'm not talking embarrassing, but fantastic, you missed a fantastic presentation from him. But but moving that space around, where we do don't have to, some guy doesn't have to walk a quarter mile between houses or to to get to a restaurant, but but he still feels like that there's a lot of green space and and there's a lot of openness. And so, as I said, the the side yard is is narrower in Mirfield than than we did later in in later subdivisions, but yet it really has that open feeling. So I think that, and that's the skill we are. So I think we we don't want to cut and dry thing. I think we have to be flexible.
No, well, I'm I'm going to go to, we've all been, we've all been to Hilton Head at some point in our lives. Hilton Head is is very, very green. It is very, very dense as well. So to the point of, and and, by the way, very walkable. And I still go to, Rosemary is not nearly as green, it's got the Spanish moss, very, very dense, they're on top of each other, the kind where they have walls between, but very, very walkable still. So it's still like to the to the point of, we can get there. It's not, there isn't one, and by the way, you know, spread-out suburban neighborhoods are very green and walkable as well. So it's not that there's one set of rules that.
I'm saying.
Good design, even within the set of parameters, can get us to where we want to be.
By the way, the Mirfield deed was stolen from Hilton Head. That 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 was their deed.
Always a wealth of history.
It's worthless information, but I.
I'm Googling Rosemary Beach over here.
Thank you.
I said, I'm Googling Rosemary Beach.
So I I realize we went off on a tangent there. We are a talkative bunch, and so the community plan, because it's everything that we do, I mean, really, why there's a Planning and Zoning Commission, it's looking at the community plan down to the implementation of the actual zoning and applications. So we certainly appreciate your presentation. Looking back to the commission, any final comments, questions?
Well, I I think, just sum it up in in nodes. We need more nodes, self-sustaining, when you talk about Fran's Road, or you got the Bridge Street District, or, you know, the old part of downtown, you need more of those nodes that can be self-sufficient and a focus point. And maybe you got to name some of them. Maybe they don't really have a name because it's maybe four subdivisions in a business district. Well, that's not a node, but it's a place I go to work, or it's a place where I go to live, but they might not be together. So while, you know, bigger cities, Columbus, you know, you got Clintonville, you got, you know, well, they don't even talk about Beachwald anymore, it's kind of got absorbed into Clintonville, but Grandview and the different communities, they have those nodes. We're not as big as that, but we could still have a micro node. I don't know what you want to call that, but that sense of community, and I like this neighborhood, I like to be here, there's enough for me to do there, not all the time, but most of the time. So I think that's what you're looking for ultimately.
And tying that back to the 2035, there was something about micro villages or mini villages or something like that in the plan also. So, thank you. So we we certainly appreciate the presentation. Any final comments from the commission? Well, thank you very much, and welcome to the team.
Yes, welcome.
Ms. Roush, it looks like we're at Communications, just making sure that nothing else has come in as we've been discussing that we need to make sure we cover. Communications this evening, do you have anything for the commission?
I guess I just wanted to circle back on where we were going with the ideas of places to visit or things to investigate, and I think that's a good, a good maybe action for us, is to bring that conversation forward and maybe put some homework back on the commission to identify communities that you like for different reasons, and we can formalize that a little bit more. But I like the idea of you all sort of coming to us with, I really love this neighborhood, and here's why. And then we can help parse out, and maybe we can do some research and find some, you know, information about what the requirements were for that or how that came to be, because I think that, because if we can't travel there, we could at least get information for that. And I mean, the world of the internet of things, right, we're pretty much access to lots of things. But we can take field trips. I mean, we've definitely done that before, where we've driven to other communities locally, we've gone on faraway field trips a long time ago. But I mean, if there's things that are of merit that help us, and maybe some ideas out of 2035 help help solidify that of, you know, there's this other community that's doing something equally great, or we want to see how they're doing it. I mean, there might be definitely opportunities for us to do that. So we'll we'll formalize that a little bit more, but I like that idea, because it's not just us stabbing in the dark at, well, we think this is great, but maybe that's not at all what you're all envisioning. So so my only other, my real communication items were, as Nikki Luda Turner emailed this this afternoon to all of you, our next meeting is canceled. We just had, all our agenda items are not eligible at this time. So so you get a little break, a little summer break on the 19th, so no meeting there. And then last week, she had worked with a number of other staff members to provide a whole bunch of materials in a digital format, which are now accessible in your resources folder, which include code, links to the charter, community plan link. There's a whole litany of things in there, and I don't want to miss any of those. But take a look and see, obviously, we can, I know most of everyone has a code, but if things need to be printed or updated, we're happy to do that. We just felt like we'll start with the digital version, and if people need other things printed, please just let us know. And also, if you have questions about what's in there, or as Sarah said, if you want to talk about the community plan, how we use that a little bit more, again, just because different people have different levels of familiarity with the material. So we just want to make sure you're feeling best equipped. So definitely let us know what you need from us, and we're happy to provide anything you need, so.
I love the new contact sheet. I hadn't seen that.
Okay. Yeah, so you can find us at all times, so.
You thought we.
That's it, though.
All right. Any communication from the commission? Well, ladies and gentlemen, congratulations on another successful and very, very enjoyable evening this evening, and everyone have a wonderful night.
I'm going to sit on the other side of you next week so I can see you.